Great. Okay. We are officially recording and we're still waiting on Bob's audio, but in the interest of time, why don't we get started? Thanks, everybody for carving out some more time on yet another Friday in June. I appreciate everyone's flexibility this month. We can talk after we get through today's business about the rest of the calendar year. And we'll memorialize that at our next meeting. But just wanted to call everyone's attention to the plan for our next meeting, which would be our July meeting on July fourteenth. To re pick up the conversation we started at our last meeting in June on outdoor dining. So wanted to get that on everyone's radar. Please let me know if you have conflicts or will be unable to attend. Moving forward, we'll, we'll work hard to get back on our first Friday of the month. Meeting date, so. Thanks for joining. Call the meeting to order the Economic Development Commission meeting of June thirtieth. Today, we're planning to discuss what was circulated. At our last meeting with regards to the change to the proposed change to the ordinance. Relative to the Economic Development Commission, following discussions that we had at our, our retreat at the beginning of the year. And the effort that the working group put forth in. In taking a fresh set of eyes and a more current look at. What our. Essentially, what was outlined in the ordinance as it relates to the Economic Development Commission in our work. So thanks to Tom Watson and all the working group members that convened. And thanks to Council Lombardi for forgetting this before the council in the May meeting. Following the presentation at the council meeting in May, this was referred to. The legal committee as well as the governance committee, I believe I have that right. And. What we had before us at last month's meeting was proposed changes to that document. That we had submitted in the original council package. So. That's what I'm hoping we can discuss today. And if so inclined, would entertain. A motion from the EDC and referring this back to the council for their upcoming meeting. So I Sean circulated the document after the meeting in June. And. Think this conversation can be fairly brief for as long as it needs to be, but that's the bulk of today's work and discussion. So I guess I would open it to the commission to entertain any questions or comments that that folks might have on the proposed changes. As circulated.
Tom.
Mr. Chair. I. Reviewed. The changes and all but one I found to be consistent with what our working group had done. It just. I thought were just tweaks related primarily to the chain of command. For city employees. Instead of having this organization contact. Staff members directly. Other than Sean, obviously. We would under the proposed changes, we would go through the. City manager or the city managers designate, which I thought are all appropriate. The one issue or question I had related to. The what I'll call transitional language for membership that. Was added by the governance committee, I believe. And that's the one that. After the language, which was already in the is in the present ordinance, it says that. Members are appointed by the mayor subject to the approval of the city council for a term of four years. And it was added. Proposed to be added, except that the first four appointments made by the mayor following the adoption of this provision shall be for a term of two years. I spoke with Counselor Lombardi about. The background on this and his understanding of the discussion in the governance committee and and the legal department. And I'm led to believe that the. Purpose for that is to have. Not necessarily even, but a sort of staggered terms where. No more than two or three of the members come up for renewal on any given year. Because we want to avoid a situation where a significant number of. Of members might come up for renewal who might not, who might. Be new people and we would have a large turnover in any given year. So I, I, I think that's a good goal. But as I looked at the proposed language and then I spelled it out and unfortunately for the folks on Zoom, I didn't anticipate. The Zoom part of this, so I, I would have sent these electronically yesterday, but. I have prepared a couple of charts which I are being distributed or have been distributed this morning. That. Show what happens if the language as proposed by the governance committee is played out. And then if a slight variation on that is. Proposed by this committee. So under the first, under the language as posed by the governance committee. It would result within three years, it would result in a situation where. On one year, two members would come up for renewal. On another year, three would come up for renewal, all of which are fine. But then. The remaining two years, there would be zero coming up for renewal or five. You know, obviously, if it was five, that would be potentially half of our committee. Actually, when you consider that a. One of our members is an alternative or an alternate, you would almost have a majority come up for renewal in one year. And. As I laid these out. It occurred to me of a potential better way of accomplishing what the governance committee seeks to do is to change the language about the first four members. And instead say, accept that the first two appointments for members whose terms expire in two thousand twenty-five. Shall each be for a term of two years. If that was the language that was adopted, it would result in a. A pattern where. There would be two years out of every four would have three members who will come up for renewal and. The other two years that have ever before would only have two members come up for renewal. So. I think that's about as even as you can get when you have a. A ten member committee with a four-year term. So I would like to propose that. We advise the city council and I guess the governance committee that, that. We change it to that language about. Terms in two thousand twenty-five.
Great. That makes a lot of sense. And thanks for doing that. I mean, I've, I wrestle with this and any more bit of on his, his terms and I've having everybody roll off at the same time. Yeah. Unless it's, you know, something, you know, that you purposely set up isn't an ending. So I think that, I think that works well.
Happy to answer any questions?
I think I just have a question for Council Lombardi. So in terms of. Protocol and things of that nature. If, if we're, if we're not going to take a vote, if the EDC is not going to take a vote today. Then, then the EDC can support Tom's proposed language returning to the governance committee. Which, which then would have to get through the governance committee or accepted to then come back to us. To the EDC to then get to the city council.
I, I think if. If you approve this. With Tom's recommendation. And put that in, if that goes to the governance committee and legal. Then it can just go to the city council.
That's okay. Great. Thank you for that.
And what we have to do is put the language into. This paragraph. Right. And send it back, put it, what I would suggest is. Put it in as a. He had a different color.
Right, right.
In the same type of format that is here. Legal, we'll look at it. And. For the city council, change it to all red. And. And then it could go.
Right.
Pretty directly to. The.
Right, just to, just to follow along the chain so we can get.
Yeah.
Toward the ultimate goal.
I mean, I think.
So we don't have any authority. To accept or reject.
Oh, but you're making a recommendation.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So I don't think we have to come back to us, is what I'm saying.
Oh, I got you. I got you. We just, we just have to agree that that's what, what this, the EDC would like to go forth.
Exactly.
Okay.
So I don't know, Tom, if you want to. Work on the language change.
Sure. Someone can send me a word version of the documents that the two you sent out were, were PDFs, I believe. So.
Okay. I think, I think one was word, one was a PDF, but really all, can I just clarify? The only change we're seeking to make is instead of. The word four as drafted, that becomes two.
No, because it, so the language is that I'm proposing is at the bottom of version two of the. Of the, yep. And, and the projected.
So where's that going?
It's going, yeah.
So it said, where it says in the fourth line of subsection A. Except that the first four appointments made by the mayor following the adoption of this provision shall be for a term of two years, strike that.
Yeah.
And replace it with, except that the first two appointments for members whose terms expire in two thousand twenty-five, they'll each be for a term of two years.
Okay.
And so we can do that.
Yeah. And, and for those who are on Zoom, that, that there's currently five members and. Who have terms expiring on August, excuse me, October first of two thousand twenty-five. So this would be. Two of those five would have two-year renewals.
That's right.
Okay. So just to clarify the mechanics of that for everybody. Any, any questions?
Uh huh. That was gonna be my question, Bill. Thank you for clarifying what the impact would be if that language wasn't added. I'm assuming this applies not just to new appointments, but reappointments as well. So the word appointments is inclusive?
Yes, I believe so.
And then the other question is, is similar language being inserted into other boards and commissions to ensure staggered terms or is it specific to the EDC?
We are doing this for all committees and commissions and. It's a difficult task to. Because we've had the situation where we have one committee that's. All expiring at the same time. And we had a. Had the situation where the mayor appointed. Full terms when there were, you know, terms to be completed, things like that. And so that's how that's happened. So. We're. Our effort is to across the board have all committees have a rotation. That ensures that there's some institutional knowledge and some new blood.
I had Anna next and then Bob. Anna, we're having a hard time hearing you.
Oh.
Still a little tough. Okay, perfect. Thank you. Bob, do you want to go ahead? Sorry, Bob, we're having a tough time. With yours as well. Do you mind typing, typing it into the chat? We're getting an internet connection is unstable warning on the broadcast here. So apologies, but I think. We're having some. Good question, Anna. Should there be a limit of terms? Can one serve for thirty years?
We've had some who got close.
I believe there's some. So I think there may be some language within our bylaws on. I don't know that there's a limit on, on renewals. I think it would be at the discretion of.
Yeah, I don't think there are.
Term.
There's no term limits.
Good question. And I think if we wanted to take that up on it, we could, we could address that not within the ordinance, but within the EDC's. Procedures.
So Sarah's got a question too. Well, sorry.
Okay. So Sarah, should limits be a broader city policy versus something specific to the EDC? Counsel Lombardi, do you want?
Yes, they are actually, not, not term limits. If there were term limits applied to committees, I think that would be. Put in as across the board. But I don't know of any. Talk of wanting term limits specifically. That, I mean, I think that's accomplished by. Having renewals and having the approval of the city council for appointments, for recommendations from the mayor and the city council for appointments. So that. That's how you. Manage that, manage that.
See, Bob, do you want to try again and see if maybe our connection's a little bit? Better? I don't see that you typed in a question yet. A little bit better. Why don't you try with the question and we'll go from there? Sorry, we're not very. I know it, the issue is certainly on our end, guys. I apologize. Any further response?
If you can stop the screen share. That might.
Yeah.
Stop.
Oh, yeah.
See if that helps. If I should have our camera. See if Bob wants to try it out.
All right, let's, let's give this another shot. Bob, you want to go ahead? Nothing more updated in the chat.
Here.
A little bit, although I.
Let's get a shot, Bob.
Bob has no question.
Thank you.
The comment, and I'm sure it was a good one.
All right, so.
Okay, well, I appreciate everyone's patience on this. And apologize for the technical difficulties. So. At this point, any further comments from, from those on Zoom? Please put them in the chat, but otherwise. At this point, I think we could, I would entertain. Motion if there's one on the floor to adopt the. Or to recommend referral of the revised. Language with further change as recommended by. Commissioner Watson this morning for referral back to legal and governance.
So moved.
One second.
One second.
So we have to do roll call votes.
Yep. So I know with the issues with the audio.
Yeah, just use your raised hand maybe to.
I think maybe if we could just have them write yes.
Alright, yes.
Raised hand is still up, so I don't want to take that as an affirmative vote, but. Sarah, yes. So all those in favor, I'll go Counsel Lombardi.
Yes.
Alan, yes.
Tom?
Yes.
I see Jacob, Anna and Bob and Sarah are all yeses as well. And I vote yes as well. So I believe that's all in favor who are on today. And then opposed, so I appreciate. The time and the. And the support. We will get this language included in the revision and, and refer back to legal and governance for, for then presentation back to the council. Makes its way through. So thanks, everybody for the. Commitment and the interest in getting this revised and, and reorienting ourselves based on the work we've been doing. Really appreciate. I think this is a great outcome. And I'll just read Sarah's comment for, for those in the room. Thank you to the members who worked on this and Counsel Lombardi for helping advocate at the council and. Echo that. Really, really great effort. So appreciate it. So with that. I think we don't have any other further business and I don't see, do we have any? Non-EDC members from the public here.
I don't see.
Wishing to speak.
Make sure that no one else is.
If not, I'm just going to pull up my calendar and, and put it to the commission regarding future meeting dates. With our next meeting on July fourteenth. The first Friday of August would be the fourth and would, would certainly be open to feedback, whether we want to continue to, to meet or whether we want to take. August meeting off and reconvene starting in September. Any thoughts, feedback? I think after our outdoor dining conversation in July, we'll, we'll kind of be back to expect the P's visit in the fall. And trying to hear from other speakers on, on other matters that we've been. Concerned with and see presentations maybe on parking as well as. Commercial real estate update. Maybe.
I know I'm on vacation in August, taking, taking some.
Nice for you.
Phil, there's the, the outstanding issue of. The EDC looking at the cruise ship proposal that we received. That's out there as well.
Is there timeliness to that?
I, I think there's, there's no timeframe or time limit. I think we, we certainly take that up in earnest after we work through our outdoor dining effort. So I think that the earliest that would be, would be August or September.
I would think we'd want to try and bring somebody in from the ports.
Yeah, it was, it's a suggestion from the public. So there wasn't, it didn't.
So there's, there's not a time. Proposal to.
No, it's just.
You.
Right. It's a, it's a request to look at it.
Got it.
This is from. Jim Hewitt, is that one?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so.
Yep. Yep. So I think we would want to have an opportunity to engage some stakeholders in that and, and hear from, from those involved in past efforts as a first step.
So my question relates to. I understand that we want to get this to the city council for their August meeting.
This.
No, that the. Outdoor dining one.
Yes.
Their discussion about that.
Yes.
And so the question I think is whether we can accomplish. Everything on the fourteenth to give them a final product. Whether we're going to need additional time. If we need additional time, then. That means we don't meet until early September. They won't get it from us until late September. Yeah, you know.
August feels timely is what I'm hearing.
Well, I, I, maybe the idea would be to keep August on our schedule. And then if we're able to. Put together a final outcome on outdoor dining, we could decide at that point to. Pass on the August meeting and go to September for the next issues.
Great.
Yeah, I'd agree with that.
And I see some comments in the chat.
I know that Sarah and I. And if I misspeaking, Sarah, please jump in. Seems to me that this came up a few years ago and Sarah and I. Both had advocated strongly for continuity in the meetings. I mean, we can always at the last minute say that.
Yep.
We have no business for us, but.
Okay, so let's keep.
Good idea.
I. Good, good suggestions.
I, to, to honest comment, Phil, can, can you let everyone know what, where the working group is at with?
Yes, absolutely. So the working group did meet on Wednesday this week. And have some changes to what had been presented in our. Last meeting. Primarily addressing much of what we heard in public comment. So I think that, that will be brought back to the group. So the intent is going to be to. Take the original presentation that we had with recommended changes from. The conversation we had this week outlining what those were and then hearing back from. The public afterwards and, and if the EDC were inclined with those changes specific to the feedback we heard, refer that back to the council. So. And I will just highlight here that the changes were relative to impact on. Retailers, particular intersection based on feedback we received from. Traffic engineer at the city. And. Another was one, one other thing I'm, someone refreshed my memory, Alan or Sean, who was. When we talked and, and rates and.
Yeah, we talked about the fee considerations that, you know, leaving it suggesting to the fee committee, but, but, but giving. The EDC's consideration from a business perspective.
Got the framework.
I think, I think if I recall, it was. In the quality of fees.
Yeah, right. Yeah. So. So what our proposal was, and we're not ready to, to present anything here today. So our intent wasn't to. What we want to get a full comprehensive package that kind of outlined the changes and exactly what we're contemplating. But yeah, before we take.
That's right, with the platform.
Yeah, but from a timeline perspective, to your point, Tom, if, if July fourteenth, the EDC comes to a close, an agreement on. Outdoor dining recommendations. That allows the EDC to make those and get those on the agenda. For the August meeting for the city council. And at that point. My opinion. That task is complete. It's now in the hands of city council and then we move, we can move, the EDC can move to other.
Well, yeah, and that's what I was, I was suggesting. I, I'm, I, I did have occasion to go back and watch the YouTube video of the meeting. So I guess my, my question, obviously, there was. More public input than we normally get for these meetings. Will we be able to get the latest proposal out there?
In advance of.
Significantly in advance. I mean, we're, we're two weeks out at this point, right?
Yeah.
So and we get the holiday in between. So. I, you know, I, I, I don't think we want to. Have people claim that we're operating secretly or, you know, not giving adequate consideration to. What the public thinks. So I, I just think we want to get it out there as soon as we can.
Yep, absolutely. I, I would say the goal would be to have it no later than the Monday before the meeting. So that gives. Full week or potentially even.
Monday before our meeting.
Right, the, the Monday before the next. EDC meeting on the fourteenth, which would be.
Yeah.
That worked for you, Sean? Oh, yeah, yeah. I, I, so I just have a question for Counsel Lombardi.
Yeah.
So the EDC has been requested to make a recommendation to city council. We're, we're getting very close. The EDC is getting very close to a document, to a set of recommendations.
Yes.
Is it? Should it go, should it go to city council before it goes out? On the, on the agenda or is it just when it goes out on the agenda, it's there for everyone to see? Public city council staff, everyone sees it at the same time. Is that the right?
Order. I mean, I think, you know, we're all public body. So. I mean, the more public it, it is, probably the better. And yeah, I mean, if, if it's.
I guess I wouldn't want city council not, not knowing it's out there and then all of a sudden. You know.
Yeah, no, I, I think.
Courtesy, this is going up on our, on our, for our next meeting.
I mean, it is a report back to the city council.
Right. Right. That's, that's where I got confused because.
I guess I would, I would.
We haven't reported back to the city council, but we're, we're hearing a desire to make it public. So that to me doesn't, is, is, doesn't sound like the right sequence, but that's.
Talk to Suzanne about.
Okay. Like, to Tom's point, I think we heard public comment in our meeting and we want to get back to. In advance of our meeting. So there's an opportunity for people to understand what, where we're at and what.
Yeah. So just, you know, I'm, I'm also on other committees. I'm a trustee of trust fund. So. Anything that we're going to consider and vote on is put out there before our meetings, including recommendations we make to the city council. Okay, so I, I think we want to note. Preliminary, you know.
Draft.
Recommendation for consideration or something like that. So it's, it's not clear. In fact, there may be members of the council who want to come and speak. To us about the proposal. So I, I, I don't think we have to worry about. Leaving the impression that we're. Out, out in front of the city council on this.
Okay. I, I agree. I just, I didn't, I didn't know. This is kind of the first time we're going through this where we've been, a specific request has been made to the EDC to go back to city council. And, and it's this, you know, my, my continued learning curve on.
No, I, I mean, you know, we, we all have to. Behave in the public, you know.
Great. And, and just to clarify for, for those who might be at home watching, you know, we're not setting policy for council. We're making recommendations based on. Existing conditions, prior policies and recommending a framework for an ordinance that. We are not completing that work. We are merely putting. Guidelines and recommendations that will inform what that ordinance. How that would be drafted by those drafting it.
And it will go back to legal, it'll go back to governance, you know, it's going to go through.
Right.
And, and public.
Sure. Yeah, that's, that's, that's why I think people, we, we've tried to make clear to the public that the EDC is not writing the ordinance and, and putting it in place.
Recommending a framework.
Yeah.
So thank you. Okay. So Anne made a comment. The last thing we covered was the with the platform.
Yeah, right.
Great.
Okay, in, in some ways, it's the same thing we've been doing with the ordinance.
Absolutely.
We, we've had our drafts out there and.
Yep.
You know.
Great. So, so thank you for the feedback on the August meeting. The. Um, so, so thank you for the feedback on the August meeting, um, the forthcoming dates through the rest of the year would be, as they stand, September first, October sixth, November third and December first. And the one I would put up for discussion with this group, uh, September first would be, I believe that's the Friday before Labor Day weekend. I'm sure that's another busy travel Friday, so I would entertain if there were interest, um, moving that to September eighth. So I don't think, we don't have to decide that today. Uh, I think I, I'd look for more input on, at our meeting on the fourteenth, but just want everyone to be thinking about and looking at those dates as we work through the rest of the year.
Sarah's going to comment.
And I, I would also say, it's just
Thank you, Sarah. Uh, I, I agree. Um, she said, I'd recommend setting the context we just shared in the next meeting. What we were tasked with, next steps and where and how uh, members of the public can continue to provide input, so
Yeah.
Totally agree, thank you.
And I think that um, one of the things that's happening is you're going to see more of this.
Yeah.
Um, that the city council is looking to the EDC to provide the business perspective. Um, right, back to us.
Yeah, great.
Um, probably a number of things, I mean, you know, it's
Appreciate the opportunity to
Yeah.
Provide some feedback and
So get used to it.
Hey, we've, we've worked for quite a number of years to get to this point, so
Yeah.
That's what we're here for.
Great. Okay. Okay.
On that high note.
Well said, Sarah.
Thank you, everyone, for your uh, participation and, and time today. Um, thanks for, for helping keep it brief and keeping things moving forward. And thanks again, Tom, for all your effort on the, the ordinance. Um, I don't have anything further, we don't have any public comments, so at this point I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second, second, all in favor?
I
Opposed?
Think you have to take a roll call.
Jacob, yes.
Yes.
Hi, okay. Excellent, yes. Okay, thank you, everyone. Have a great weekend.
Thank you, you too. Have a great holiday.
Take care.
Safe holiday.
Sean?
Yes.
Hey, do you have any interest?